It over to you Chair Ruth.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and I'll bring the meeting of October of August 16, 2021 of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And as always, we can begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Ruth, excuse me, let me start again. Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Yakaponey.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Ruth.
Present. Well, the next item on the agenda is the public comment. And public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have the matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If there is, you can raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or you can press star nine on your phone. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
Okay. Move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. And does anyone have any changes to the minutes from July 14th or July 19th?
None for me.
None for me. Yeah.
None for me, well, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 14 and July 19, 2021.
I will move that we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission from the meetings of July 14, 2021, and July 19, 2021.
And did I hear a second? Great, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing. The procedure for a public hearing, staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, that the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city and/or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This was just staff in preparing the minutes. The first item on the agenda is 2125 Carmelita Drive. And this is an appeal of RDRC denial of design review for new residents. And this item has been continued to the Tuesday, September 7, 2021, meeting.
Yes, and through the chair, I would just like to remind the commission, we would need a motion and a second to a date certain. That would be great.
Okay.
I will move that the item 6A, the public hearing for 2125 Carmelita Drive, APN 049352090, APP 2021-00005, Appeal of the RDRC Denial of Design Review for a New Residence, be continued to a date certain of Tuesday, September 7, 2021, meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second.
My second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay, the next item on the public hearing is that the staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending the City Council adopt the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, CMAP, and Addendum Number One to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report, EIR. Would we like to have the staff presentation?
Yes, through the chair, I will be handing the microphone over to Adam Locar, our Sustainability Assistant Management Analyst. Welcome.
Great, thank you, Lisa, and good evening, Commissioners. As Lisa said, my name is Adam Locar, I'm a management analyst in our City Manager's Office. Also joining me here today are Timmy Seal and Eli Crispie from Placeworks, they're our consultants for the project. And we're here today to give you a presentation on the draft Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan to answer any of your questions and hopefully for you to make a formal recommendation to City Council for its adoption. Next slide, please. Also on the project team on the city side is our Assistant City Manager Tara Peterson and Nicole McDonald. And on the Placeworks side, also Jacqueline Protsman, Jessica Robbins, and Torina Wilson. Next slide. So we'll start here just with a little bit of overview, help provide some context behind this project. Slide. So the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, and what we call it CMAP for short, is an update and expansion to the 2009 Climate Action Plan that the city adopted, when it adopted its previous general plan. And it's to ensure that the city remains consistent with different state regulations related to greenhouse gas emission reductions and other changing conditions. So what the CMAP includes is greenhouse gas reduction goals going out through the years 2030 and 2050 with detailed strategies to achieve those targets. In addition, this plan also recognizes the potential climate change impacts and vulnerabilities in the community and identifies strategies that support climate adaptation and resilience. It provides an implementation and monitoring program to guide staff in executing the strategies in the plan, and it also includes an environmental review consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. Here's the layout of the document, starts with the executive summary, which provides an overview of the greenhouse gas inventory forecast, vulnerability assessment, and the list of strategies. The introduction describes both the purpose of the CMAP, the regulatory framework, and how the plan was prepared. The greenhouse gas emissions chapter includes the emissions inventories and forecasts and establishes our greenhouse gas reduction targets. The vulnerability to climate change chapter includes the process for conducting the vulnerability assessment, overviews, populations and assets and hazards in the city. And then the greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategies provides the goals, the strategies, actions chosen to help San Carlos achieve the greenhouse gas reduction targets, including the amount of emissions reductions that each strategy would result in and the associated co-benefits. The adaptation strategy chapter outlines the same type of strategies but focused more on climate change adaptation. And then the final chapter is the implementation strategy, and it outlines how the CMAP will be implemented, followed by all the technical appendices. Next slide, please. I'll just talk here really briefly about the preparation of the plan itself. Next slide. So we began this project over a year ago, we did present to this group, if you remember, it was about a year ago at this point. And we began really by focusing on the kind of technical analyses, including analyzing greenhouse gas emissions and developing our vulnerability assessment, though, in the winter of 2020. Moving into the summer, we, or moving into the, excuse me, the winter and spring of this year, we started kind of developing these draft strategies. And then moving into the summers when we'd been preparing the actual plan. Throughout this process, we've strived to provide opportunities for community engagement through different means to ensure that the CMAP is representative of the values and the expectations of our community. Next slide, please. In the first phase of community outreach, we announced this project through a spotlight newsletter and on social media, and presented to all city commissions in inviting participation. We then hosted two community workshops in August and October of last year to share the revised greenhouse gas inventories and vulnerability assessment to gather ideas from the community on possible actions the city could take to address climate change. Next slide. In the second phase of the project, included engaging with the San Carlos community to share updates on the CMAP process and to provide an opportunity for community feedback and revisions to the climate action strategies. So this included a workshop on February 9, where we presented kind of preliminary draft strategies to facilitate a discussion on how the community felt they could or could not take action on the draft strategies, which helped inform the creation of the strategies we will present later in this presentation. At this time, we also met with stakeholders like representatives from the business community, local environmental groups, other regional agencies that will be key partners for the CMAP's implementation, and also met with city staff and returned and presented again to all the other city commissions for feedback. Next slide, please. And Phase Three is where we find ourselves now. We have presented the draft CMAP that we prepared to City Council at a study session in June and received feedback, and we've made amendments in response to their comments. And then pending the commission's recommendation, this evening, we plan to return to council in September for possible adoption of the plan. And with that, I will turn things over to Eli Crispie of Placeworks to walk us through the actual components of the CMAP.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, Commissioners. As I mentioned, I will be going through a little more detail about some of the content in the CMAP. Next slide, please. So we'll begin with the vulnerability assessment. The vulnerability assessment is a description of how the climate change-related hazards, such as drought and sea level rise, are expected to change in and around San Carlos. The assessment identifies the people and the community assets who are most at risk from climate change-related hazards and how susceptible they are to these events. The vulnerability assessment builds on a lot of existing work that's been completed over the past few years. It also ties into the city's ongoing general plan update and will help to meet some of the state requirements for the updated safety element that's being prepared as part of the general plan update. Next slide, please. So there are some areas of San Carlos that are at risk of specific individual hazards. The areas near the shoreline, as you might think, are at risk of sea level rise, and that includes areas that have seen a lot of new business development lately. There is a possibility that if no action is taken, some of these areas could begin to be permanently underwater within a few decades. Areas along the creeks and especially some of the low-lying areas a little south of downtown find themselves at risk of increased flooding as a result of climate change. And then neighborhoods closer to the hills do face an elevated risk of wildfires. There are also some hazards, such as extreme heat and drought, that may affect all parts of the city more or less equally. Next slide, please. These are some of the key findings in the vulnerability assessment. There is a much more detailed set of findings in the CMAP document. But overall, we find that an increase in extreme heat days, along with increases in air pollution from wildfires, is likely to create higher health risks for many different populations. Senior citizens, persons with disabilities, others with limited mobility, are all among groups that are likely to face challenges during evacuation events, and those events may become more frequent in the future. We also find in the vulnerability assessment that there is a potential disruption to energy networks from wildfires, extreme heat, and severe weather, such as the PSPS events that we've been seeing over the past few years. Next slide, please. We'll look now at the greenhouse gas emissions. We prepared in the CMAP a greenhouse gas inventory. And an inventory is an assessment of the greenhouse gas emissions that are attributed to San Carlos. We look at the emissions for the entire community, and those that are attributed to residents, businesses, visitors, and so on. And then we also look at the emissions from the operations of the city government. The CMAP looks at emissions going back as far as 2005 for the community and 2015, in the case of city operations, and shows how emissions have changed since those baseline years. Next slide. So this goes into a little more detail about what is included in the community-wide and the city operations emissions. And you can see that the community-wide inventory is meant to cover a wide range of activities that are occurring in San Carlos. And then the city operations inventory is really focusing on what is happening at city facilities. Next slide, please. So if we look now at the specific results. Here are some of the community-wide emissions from 2005 to 2018. And you can see that they have been pretty consistently going down since 2005. As of 2018, community-wide emissions were 25% below 2005 levels. Transportation, which is represented by the green bar, is the largest source of community-wide emissions, and that's followed by residential and non-residential energy use, electricity and natural gas use, and those are the orange and red bars. And then there are a handful of smaller sources of greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide, please. Digging in a little more, we see that emissions from energy have gone down the most of any source from 2005 to 2018. That is partly because community members are using less electricity and less natural gas, but it's also because sources of electricity have gotten quite a bit cleaner over this period. That's especially with service from Peninsula Clean Energy. Even though community members are driving more, or were driving more in 2018 than they did in 2005, the transportation emissions have declined, and that's due to more fuel-efficient vehicles and the increased adoption of electric cars. There has also been a decrease in the amount of water used in the community and the amount of solid waste that is produced, and that has decreased emissions that are associated with those activities. Next slide, please. So having assessed the historic emissions, the next step is to look at what emissions will be in the future. We start by assuming that no action is taking place to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So it's a sort of worst-case scenario. So in this case, emissions increase as the population grows, as you see here, and that does include the significant job growth that is projected through the East Side Innovation District developments. And then with that kind of as the worst-case situation, we then consider the benefits of existing state programs. And then lastly, we look at the benefits of existing regional and local programs on top of that. Next slide, please. So here are the results of that process. And you can see that without any existing programs or any existing planned programs to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, emissions in San Carlos do rise as the population increases. Once state programs are factored in, there is still some emission growth, but it's quite a bit smaller. And once local and regional programs are factored in, such as Peninsula Clean Energy, emissions out to 2030 and 2050 stay relatively close to 2018 levels. You'll note that this does not include the recently adopted All Electric Reach Code that is assessed elsewhere in the CMAP, and that will help to bring down emissions even further. Next slide, please. And this is a larger list of some of the actions that San Carlos has taken since the existing cap was adopted in 2009 that have helped to reduce greenhouse gas emissions so far. And looking at the trajectory that we just went over, these are all likely to continue contributing towards greenhouse gas emission reductions in the future. Next slide, please. So with those existing emissions factored in, you'll see that the overall distribution of greenhouse gas emissions has not changed too much. Transportation, that green bar, again, remains the largest, the largest source of emissions. But all of those existing and planned efforts do help to keep emissions well below the 2005 baseline, even with all of the population growth that is expected. Next slide, please. So that's kind of the technical foundation of the CMAP, and that brings us to the greenhouse gas reduction and adaptation strategies that are included. On the greenhouse gas side, the strategies are meant to reduce greenhouse gas emissions on a path that is consistent with the state's targets. California has adopted a target of reducing greenhouse gas emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and is working towards a goal of reducing emissions 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. So that is a pathway for reductions that the CMAP puts San Carlos on. It is important to note that these targets and this pathway for reduction, this is meant to be a floor for greenhouse gas emission reductions, it's not a ceiling. The city can certainly go beyond this approach. The city can reduce greenhouse gas emissions below these levels, or the city can accelerate these reductions to hit these targets sooner, or some combination of those. There are likely to be new policy and technology innovations in the future that will help to reduce greenhouse gas emissions beyond what are included in the CMAP, but because we don't know what they are, we haven't been able to account for them here. You may consider that the 2009 cap does not include PCE as an action, and that wasn't really on the horizon at the time that cap was prepared. But the city took advantage of that opportunity when it became available, and it played a significant role in reducing emissions. So we do expect those types of opportunities to arise in the future and to be evaluated at that appropriate time and to be built into future versions of the CMAP. Next slide, please. On the greenhouse, on the climate adaptation side, there are not specific targets to hit, but the CMAP is making sure that the city is complying with state law to assess the harm posed by climate change and to develop strategies to improve community resilience to climate change and all of the associated hazards. Next slide, please. So taking a closer look at some of the strategies that we've been talking about, the strategies were developed based on several sources. There was community input throughout the CMAP process, that was key, and a lot of the feedback that we collected through public engagement was incorporated into the CMAP as a strategy or as part of a strategy. We looked at staff comments as well, considering staff's expertise and familiarity with the community. We reviewed current regional and statewide best practices and known successes, looking at for opportunities to continue existing successful efforts. And we also made sure to incorporate new and emerging ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve climate adaptation, really to make sure that we're keeping San Carlos on the cutting edge of sustainability policy. Next slide, please. On the greenhouse gas reduction side, there are 33 strategies organized around eight goals, and these are meant to reduce five key sources of greenhouse gas emissions. Each strategy includes a number of targeted implementation acts that are intended to help the city put these strategies into effect. Next slide, please. There are two ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. You can reduce the amount of the activity that produces emissions, or you can decrease what is called the carbon intensity, which is the amount of emissions produced per unit of activity. So for example, if the goal was to reduce emissions from transportation, one way to do that is to decrease the amount of the activity that is producing transportation emissions, that is, reducing people's dependence on cars, making it easier to use other forms of transportation, public transit, walking, biking, and so on. But the other way to do that would be to decrease the carbon intensity of transportation. So that would be increasing the use of fuel-efficient and electric vehicles. The CMAP, in some cases, may only be able to do one or the other of these approaches, but we are certainly leveraging both approaches wherever we can. Next slide, please. Walking through some of the sector and/or source-specific strategies in the CMAP, these are some of the energy-focused ones. Conservation and efficiency is certainly the first priority to reducing overall energy use, and then following that with a transition to cleaner energy sources. So that includes energy efficiency retrofits, renewable energy installations, decreases in natural gas use, and promoting the All Electric Reach Code. It also includes improving resilience of the energy system to better protect against power outages, including the public safety power shut-off events. Next slide, please. The CMAP builds on existing efforts and new state-level activities to continue to reduce transportation. transportation-related emissions. The strategies in the CMAP are meant to make it easier to use walking and biking. They support increased use of mass transit and micro mobility. They allow for land uses that are less car-dependent, and then they're also helping with the transition to electric vehicles. Next slide, please. These strategies associated with waste are not only about improving composting and recycling to help keep waste out of landfills, but they're also meant to help promote a transition away from disposable items and toward more reuse and more repair, so that there is less waste being produced in San Carlos in the first place. And there are also strategies around some of these smaller sectors, water efficiency, and supporting cleaner construction and cleaner landscaping equipment. Next slide, please. Here's all of the reduction potential for these strategies. This is the overall reduction pathway in the CMAP. So given the level of implementation that is assumed in the CMAP, the number of people participating and involved in these efforts, there is a pathway for San Carlos to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030 and 80% below 1990 levels by 2050, meeting those reduction targets set by the state and even accounting for increases in population. Again, the city does have the opportunity to go farther in its reductions or to accelerate this pathway if desired. Next slide, please. On the adaptation side, the adaptation strategies are intended to address the range of climate change-related hazards in San Carlos, focusing on some of the hazards of greatest concern. And this includes new education and awareness programs, increases in community services, especially for vulnerable populations. There are recommendations for capital improvements, and there is also efforts around more regional collaboration to address these climate change issues in partnership with neighboring communities. Climate change just off the top of the city limits. We want to make sure that the city is well-integrated with what is going on in San Mateo County and in the wider Bay Area. Next slide, please. So staff brought the CMAP to the city council for a study session back in June. The council reviewed the document and did direct that there be some changes. Next slide, please. So I'll just go over these briefly. These changes that we're about to show, they have all been incorporated into the draft of the CMAP that is in your packet. And this includes updating and discussing the job numbers that are meant to include increased development on the east side. These changes include also providing details about how strategies are prioritized, and there is more discussion around the all-electric reach code. Next slide, please. We also made sure to emphasize increases in housing supply as a way of decreasing greenhouse gas emissions and to support improved evacuation access as a way of improving community resilience. Next slide, please. There were also a handful of minor language updates to the strategies. These are meant to add in additional opportunities for reductions or increased adaptation, or they're meant to clarify or emphasize particular topics. Next slide, please. So with all of that, the, and there is an addendum to the current general plan environmental impact report, which covers the environmental review for the CMAP. The addendum did find that there would be no new significant impacts, nor that there would be any substantial increases in the severity of the existing significant impacts that are identified in the certified general plan, EIR. Next slide, please. So tonight, we are asking that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the climate mitigation and adaptation plan and addendum number one to the general plan environmental impact report. Next slide, please. And with that, we will be happy to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Eli and Adam. Are there questions from planning commissioners?
I don't have a question at this point, but I want to thank the planning consultants at Placeworks and our own planning staff and, and Aaron for putting this all together, even though it was a lot of reading for the planning commission to do for this meeting. You did an excellent job. It's easy to understand and reads well. Thank you very much, all of you, our staff included.
Let's see, I see Commissioner Clements, you have raised your hand.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. I'll start with an easy one. I see what could be a typo, but I wanted to understand it better. On figure nine with the projected warm nights in San Carlos, I was reading the graph and trying to understand what it said. And so I don't know if you have the report in front of you or Eli or Adam, and you could help me interpret it. It says it's an average of 45 warm nights per year by mid-century, so 2050, that looks, I can find that, and an average of 109 warm nights per year by the end of the century. And I'm wondering if the 2100, year 2100, if that is a typo and should read 139 warm nights.
You know, I, I have to review the, sorry, do you know what page it's on?
Well, the printed version that I've got is different than the revised one in my packet, so it's right above figure nine. It's the old printed version is page 39, it's probably 41 or something now.
Okay. All I can say without taking a better look at it is our warm nights are expected to go up. I'm sure we can review that, I guess, to make sure it's accurate.
I was just trying to make sure you understood the graph. Because one of my pet peeves is warm nights.
Sure. Eli, do you think you could help us out here?
I think I can provide a little clarity on that. Yes, when we talk about the end of the century, what we're referring to in that graph is an average of the years 2070 to 2099. So the 109 warm nights is the average over that 30-year period, you know, not the, the very tail end of the graph at 21.
Oh, okay. I think maybe that sentence needs some clarification then, that it's only a 30-year period.
We can, we can certainly make that edit.
Okay. I have a question on my printed page 20 about transportation. It's about changes, it's right before table three, updates to the 2005 baseline inventory. So I was trying to understand where our greenhouse gas emissions come from. And I noticed that the changes that were due, you know, from the last version, what had changed to this version is that the 2005 inventory included pass-through trips, but that the methodology actually changed for this version and that these pass-through trips have been removed in the updated inventory. But that was not explained as to the rationale why they were removed or should be removed. And I was wondering if you could explain that and potentially add something in the text about that.
Eli, I may point to you to answer this as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. The, so the pass-through trips, you know, those that do not begin or end in San Carlos, they were removed because they are emissions that the city doesn't have any control over. It's kind of a fluke that San Carlos has those emissions just by virtue of being located on the freeway. So because they're, you know, say, beginning in San Jose or ending in San Francisco or then any other examples outside of the city, there really isn't a good way for the city to influence those emissions or to develop policies to reduce them. You know, that would require the cities kind of at the beginning or at the end on those trips. So because there isn't much of an opportunity to address those emissions and they're not being generated by community members, you know, they're not really applicable to the community, so they were removed. And that is a, that's a method change that is consistent with current best practice and state recommendation.
Right, okay.
We have, we have gone back and to clarify too, we've gone back and updated previous inventories with, with that change as well. So it's all, it's all on the same playing field, if you will.
Thanks. Yeah, I know you can argue it either way, and I know it's best to have a plan that you can actually effectuate. But I can, you know, it's really a regional problem then that we're working to solve together, for instance, to increase use of Caltrain. That would reduce pass-through trips, but that it's not, of course, in the city's purview alone, so. All right, thanks for that. And a couple more questions. One was, I was reading the appendix and it cited the community workshops and the attendees that had cited, that had attended, and it said that 35 people attended in February and 30 attendees participated between October and August. And my guess is there's a duplication between those numbers, so not quite 65 people total. So, which, this is a really important plan, and I was somewhat surprised to see my block in light purple, for instance, in the floodplain for 500-year floodplain. Not happily, but I was just wondering if there was an effort to reach out to residents of neighborhoods that had more likelihood of flooding or likelihood of fire, wildfire proximity while the outreach was occurring.
Right, we did, we didn't reach out to any neighborhoods more aggressively than others. I'll say, I, we targeted just the, the community as a whole through, first, we sent out a spotlight newsletter to kind of kick off the project, and then just social media postings and postings on our website and, and anything we could do to get the word out.
Right. Yeah, and I think, I think it would be appropriate to reach out to specific neighborhoods more because I think they would appreciate looking at the maps more like I did. I'm glad I'm on the planning commission and looked at this. So I was like, oh, that's why my backyard floods. I never really knew that before. So, and then I, I know this is, I'll leave time for other commissioners to ask questions. I just wanted to say, I was looking for it and, you know, it's a long report, so forgive me if I missed it, but I know lots of good ideas in here, lots and lots of things that I support, and I'm very happy that I am so pleased that the city is doing this plan. I can't tell you how proud I am that we actually have initiatives like this for a small city and that we are, you know, actively trying to make things better here for the environment because, you know, we're all subject to the, to the environmental changes that are going on. But I missed, perhaps it's not here, but perhaps I just missed it. Is there a section on implementation that talks about the various resources that could be applied? And where was that?
Yes, I pointed to the implementation table. It's probably, I think it's table 25, where you, we list all the strategies, all the actions, and then each strategy has a relative, you know, level of resources required, I think broken up into a few different categories.
Oh, I see, the last column's the options, actually sources. Got it. I didn't see that last column. Thank you.
It's a big table.
Well, it's little font by them. Okay, thank you. I have some more comments, but I'll save them until after questions. Thank you so much.
Mr. Garvey, you have some questions?
Thank you, Chair Roof. I, I want to echo the Commissioner Bradley's comments and commend staff as well as Placeworks. This is a very readable document, and, and as Vice Chair Clements mentioned, it's a long document, but the way you have chosen to organize it with all of the strategies going into eight goals, for me, made it a lot easier to read and to understand. And I, and I liked the, the use of color and layout. It was one of those documents that was very readable, and that's not an easy thing to do. I really appreciated all the workshops and the summaries and the surveys. I think the, the community engagement has been a really valuable part of this process, and I participated in a couple of these. And many of the comments that were received at the workshop have been pulled forward into strategies. So I really appreciated that Placeworks and staff was listening to the community and incorporating those suggestions into the report. One, one question was on reporting on progress. Can you clarify for me, how often do you report on progress and who is that progress report given to?
Yes, the, the plan makes a recommendation to report on progress annually, and there are listed out kind of performance metrics that we can use to reference to track how we're, how we're doing on, on each strategy, and that report would, would go to council, city council. Sometimes we've done it in a council newsletter, just to make sure it's available to both electeds and the public.
And I think that last comment is really important to the planning commission, that the public receive those updates. And if it goes into the, if it goes to city council and it goes into the council newsletter, I think that's a really good vehicle to get the updates to fellow residents. And I'm, I'm really pleased to hear that there's an annual report that will be going to them. Thanks for clarifying that. And then my last question, I was looking at the title of the plan here, City of San Carlos Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. This adaptation, is that a, is that something that all cities are doing? Is an adaptation element in the plan? Or is that something that fewer, that only San Carlos is doing? Can you clarify that?
Sure, this is kind of one area where we're maybe a little ahead of other cities on. Everyone's required to do climate adaptation planning. We've kind of chosen to pull it in to our climate action plan. I think the, the thinking at the staff level was that there's enough overlap between our efforts to reduce emissions and to adapt to the impacts of climate change. And so kind of pulling them together into one document kind of provided a really comprehensive approach towards addressing climate change. So, so no, not other cities will, will have this kind of adaptation component to their climate action plans.
Well, that, that's really encouraging to hear. And I'll just conclude by adding my voice to what Vice Chair Clements was saying, you know, we're a small city and we've really expended a lot of effort here to do this robust plan. And I'm just really pleased not only to be a part of the planning commission, but to just be, you know, a resident and to be a part of this whole effort. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Let me add this. I, I agree with former Chair Garvey and Vice, Vice Chair Clements on their comments and what I said before, but I did have one thing that I think would help in the, the graphics in the report is at the top of the tables, all the tables, is there's a dark green color that almost, well, it just makes it very difficult, at least from my eyesight, to read what's under the, the dark green color, the headlines of each column in the, in the table, if you know what I mean. I'm wondering if that can be just lightened up a bit or, or change colors perhaps. Yellow and black always works well for those of us that don't, don't see well.
Sure, no, no problem. It looks like it's kind of like a teal and black, not a very good contrast. We can certainly look at that.
Yeah, yeah, just it makes, I think people would tend not to, to read what's under there so much if they can, if they have difficulty as I did. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Yakapony, I see you have raised.
Thank you, Chair Roof. And Adam and Eli, thank you for taking the time this evening and all of the work put into this, this document. Could you, would you mind clicking back to slide 46? Whoever's got the clicker.
I'm not sure. Oh, they're numbered at the bottom, I see. Here we go.
Now that one, great. So when I was reading through the, the document and trying to cross-reference pages, I was thinking I would find a table that for 2030 and 2050 would show the impact of the different activities, whether they were state or local, that made up the light blue difference, meaning that wedge down there at the bottom. And is there such a table that, did I miss that? Like, I couldn't come up with, how do you get from, you know, 160,000 tons to 36,000 tons? And what, what all went into that? So did I, did I miss it? And if so, maybe you could point that out?
It is in there. It's either in the greenhouse gas emission chapter or in the appendices. Eli, I'm not sure if you know where. Eli, I'm not sure if you know where our existing actions table. Yes, it should be table fourteen in the CMAP document.
If you if you wouldn't mind, let me just see if I can find it real quickly. I may not be able to. But look, let me just say that the reason for asking is, and it might be useful for you as you finalize the both the presentation and the document. I I think it was Eli said there was a pathway to get from A to B. And it seems like that's the lead story. And it felt like it was, if you'll excuse the reference, that you buried the lead because that's really the key part, that we're adopting a document and a plan which gets us from an outlook of a big number to an outlook that will have a lot less emissions if we do these things and here's what the result is. And I just didn't, I would have thought that would have been upfront and in presented in a way that gave us that summary. So again, if I missed it, my apologies, but it might be something that other readers would be interested in and seeing that summary.
Yeah, it's printed page fifty three on the versions that we had picked up, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes, and I heard your comment.
If you don't mind, fifty three.
Yeah, table fourteen. If if I could concur, I I do think, you know, to my colleague's point, what what we're trying to do is to sell the, you know, create energy behind the many strategies and the convey the importance of actually doing those strategies and making those resources available to get those done. On this this table, you know, that that wedge, that's the that's the takeaway. Like, if we get, if we do those things, we can achieve this change.
Yeah, and and if I if I could, if I look at this table fourteen, and I'm sorry to drill down a little bit here, but this is pretty important. If I look at the bottom of the table for twenty fifty, the forecast emissions get us from a hundred and fifty seven thousand tons to a hundred and fifty six thousand tons. So that's good. We went down fifteen hundred tons. But I think this chart here forty six says we're trying to get to thirty six. And I think I can't make up the other hundred and twenty thousand tons of difference.
This, yeah, I should clarify that this table, table fourteen is a is is a of what we call the the existing and planned actions only. That's what I thought you were referencing earlier. So that would be the kind of the green line here on on the chart. Yeah.
So is there, again, did I miss a table that gets us to the blue line?
Let me, it should, yeah. Go for it. Table twenty three, which sums up the combined greenhouse gas reductions from all of the strategies. And that's the the light blue wedge that gets to that blue line that is the the ultimate pathway for reductions.
Let me create.
This is Tara. Perhaps what we could do, Eli, is maybe put in these blue boxes where they can find the tables within the document that that applies to. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I think we can certainly do that.
Yeah, great, thank you. And I I do see it, and it is in the appendix on ending at page one oh three. So, look, I think you've got a great lead. You've got a plan. We understand it. Love to have it be more front and center for the public. And that's my comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, maybe I'll ask my question and then we can take a second pass, including including Commissioner Clemens. And my question is on the the transition to low carbon transportation, which is very important because transportation is the the biggest contributors to to global greenhouse gases. So the all in strategy eighteen, it's in in our printout, it's on page one ninety nine, is shows the electric vehicle impact, which is a big, I imagine, a big part of the transportation impact is the is vehicles like cars and but the I'm wondering, these are the performance indicators show, for instance, a net increase in public EV chargers going from fifteen to to twenty five of those from the time span of twenty thirty to twenty fifty. That just doesn't seem to align very well with the idea that the majority or nearly all cars will be electric the become be in the twenty year timeframe. And so I'm trying to reconcile these numbers with my expectations that we would have a lot more electric charging infrastructure than would seem to be our goals on this table.
Yeah, it could just be that those that what we're targeting there are just public publicly owned and operated charging stations. I think the expectation is is that there will be significantly more private companies that are owning and operating charging stations available to the community as well simultaneously as we as we make this transition. That would maybe fit more with with the expectations that you have.
I see. Okay, and that's public EV chargers. And then up above, there's the workplace parking spaces be charging. Those are given percentages, but it just seemed like as we get a larger and larger amount of EV cars, it's going to be pretty major effort required to provide the charging infrastructure and that the city could play a fairly big part in that. And I wanted to make sure that this that this was aggressive enough. That the public part clarifies it somewhat for me. And then I gather we'd be relying on the private private charging facilities to take up a big part of it. But fifteen or twenty five seems like practically none.
Sure, we can revisit this 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 indicator too.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And I'd echo the other commissioners. I thought seeing comprehensively what all the different impacts and and what the city could potentially do to help mitigate those seemed very, it's really, really great. It's a great great document, a great start. My second question is on on the flood, on the on the potential for flooding, especially in the areas east of of one oh one. The adaptation plan that we have is is sort of almost, it seems fairly much in its infancy to conduct a feasibility to, you know, an assessment. While if the sea level is going to rise as feet as predicted, it seems like more concrete adaptations are going to be required. I mean, Foster City is building quite a high wall around a large part of its city. And I'm wondering if more specific adaptations are going to be needed for San Carlos and that that doesn't seem to be included very explicitly in this document.
Yeah, we didn't. We didn't dive too much into the specificity of, you know, raising levies and things like that. I think the the direction provided by the plan with regards to sea level rise is to really participate in kind of the regional response that that and not have just kind of a piecemeal approach. And so looking really to partner with the county and with agencies like the the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District to make sure we kind of have this unified approach and and support their efforts in 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 addressing this issue on their projects.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions for the moment. Commissioner Clemens, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I wanted to again say that I appreciate all the bright colors and the coding that helped me get through the large document. I also wanted to say that I I enjoyed the, I appreciated your branding of the co-benefits that the various strategies would bring. And it's something that, you know, at my work, I try to keep, I try to use icons and talk to my teams about like, okay, we got to have like consistent icons to convey similar thoughts and use that across different strategies so we can kind of be consistent. One thing that I was looking for, I didn't see that I thought could help, but again, I could have missed it, was there somewhere where it looked at the various strategies and it kind of checked off which ones helped climate, community resiliency, which ones helped community partnerships? So you could see an aggregation of which co-benefits were covered well versus which ones were kind of lightly covered. I think that kind of chart might be really great. So you could see like, wow, we hit this category really well as an example. Did I miss that? Was that in here?
No, I don't think, no, that is, that isn't in there, but it's a great suggestion. Thank you.
And it might be really helpful to do something like that in our annual report.
Yes, exactly. People get people used to the icons and report like that too. Yeah, that's a great idea.
I would offer this. Sorry.
Oh, please, Commissioner, go ahead.
I just wanted to add.
Oh, that's okay. I I was just going to ask one other, were you going to comment on formatting or go for it? Okay, I'll just ask one more question then, so.
Commissioner Clement first and then Commissioner Bradley.
Jen, great, fourth. Is part of this or something to this, is there a climate section that's going to go into the housing element? And is that part of the reason that this is being? Or is that not going to go into, I know these are put in in some, so is there some side for the housing element?
Through the chair, this is Lisa Porres, Planning Manager and Project Manager for the Housing Element Update. If I understood your question correctly, and I apologize, Commissioner Vice Chair Clemens, because on my screen or my audio, you were cutting in and out. But I think your question had to do with what 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 elements of this plan or, you know, might be addressed in the housing element. Or is the housing element going to cover certain sections? And it is required, you are correct, by state law, that one of the things that we need to look at is energy efficiency in the context of the housing element. So we will be able to draw upon, you know, the work efforts that have been, you know, the foundation that has been laid through this plan that we're seeing here tonight as we contemplate how we can kind of connect those strategies to, you know, what we're required to develop per state law through the housing element and energy efficiency and to further these so that they're, you know, well coordinated and support each other. So I hope that answers your question, but yes, I think that we absolutely have to be looking at in the context of the housing element per specific state law associated with housing element updates and housing in particular.
Got it. Thank you. Again, really good work. Thank you for this.
Commissioner Bradley, did you have another comment?
Yes, I have a comment and a question. First, the question, recently, San Carlos completed bicycle master plan for the city. And I I may have missed it. I didn't see that referred to in the text. I may be wrong, but if if not, we missed it, how can we integrate that into this too? Because bicycles are a great part of saving greenhouse gases, of course. And my my comment is a trivial one, again, back to colors and graphics and in the presentation of this excellent report. I like the icons, but the the words below it were in like a pale gold that I found. I don't know if anybody else found it hard to to read, read those. But I would suggest that to darken it up slightly, it would be much easier to read. Thank you.
I concur. I think those comments are important so that this is accessible to all of the public.
Yes.
Thank you. And sorry, I'm speaking on a turn, Chair.
Well, let's let's. Commissioner Garvey, you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to talk just a minute and have a question about the TDM plans. As as a commission, when we review new large residential and and any commercial project, we have, ever since I've been on the commission, required and approved very strong and robust TDM plans. Is this incorporated in the plan? And how are the impacts of future TDM plans factored into the plan? As we look at the east side development and we see, you know, the potential and the reality, I think of much more new commercial development coming down there. I think it's a reasonable assumption that there will be a robust TDM plan, a transportation demand management plan linked a part of all of those projects. Is that envisioned in the out years when we looked at this new development? Or how are those robust TDM plans factored in?
Well, I'll say, yes, transportation is the largest source of our emissions. And I think with the projected job growth that that will bring more transportation related emissions. And so we do have strategies in the plan that, you know, add to the importance of of transportation demand management, especially with with some of the new developments on on the east side.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Yeah, just to respond to Commissioner Bradley's question that, yes, we do refer to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan within this document, correct, Adam?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, we do. We do refer to the the bicycle and pedestrian master plan and our strategies related to transportation.
That's what my comment was.
I guess I just missed it.
It's in the back little table, that small font table. It's strategy twelve on printed page one thirty one.
I I think I was looking more for a map to show how it integrates with the city and, you know, like the the fire hazard area and the landslide area and the flooding area. Just a map like that, but maybe not necessary. But we paid quite a bit of money for it and we need to get some mileage, excuse the pun, out of it.
The, um, we don't have a lot.
I have one, I have one more comment, please, excuse me, but for putting in, but the, I was taken back with edible landscape. Is that like, I'm old enough to remember Victory Gardens in World War Two, where people, including my family, grew vegetables and had fruit trees in their yard and we ate them, so it was very efficient. They were good and it saved a trip to the market. Is that is that what we're referring to here, edible landscaping?
Yes, that's.
In the document?
Yes, that's right. Efforts to support kind of locally grown foods. That's that's correct. And.
I was glad to see it.
Great. And there is a really detailed routes map with relates to to bicycle infrastructure in the bike bicycle and pedestrian master plan. So it is it is there, something this document, though.
It's in this CAP.
In the in the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Oh, yeah, I know. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey, did you raise your hand again, or is that?
Yes, just one, just one final question, Chair Roof. I I wanted to give a shout out to the reach codes. We all know that the city adopted a very forward thinking electric reach code. And that was after the two thousand and eighteen baseline that went into this plan. But I was reading through the plan the other day and I noticed that the that the reach codes are in there and they are in there as a strategy for the future. So I was really pleased. So I was really pleased to see that the emission reductions associated with that forward thinking action are included as a strategy in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners before we open for comments from the public?
Just one here. I'm wondering if we know there's a San Mateo County Hazard Mitigation Plan that's in, in the process. And I think they're gonna, your, the CAP plan that you gave us here refers to it and says it'll, it'll be published next month. If they're on schedule. So do we know about that and if they're on schedule and if we need to integrate it into our plan?
Yes, I know that the local hazard mitigation plan, I think, I believe it's out for public comment right now. But yes, I think the, the local hazard mitigation plan will, our, our section of it points to the, to this plan. And, and references it in a few different spots, which is, is good because it opens up for possible funding through FEMA grants. So it is referenced in, in the local hazard mitigation plan, the, the climate mitigation and adaptation plan.
And I can add to that, just that it is out for public comment. It's also been submitted to the state for approval. Once we have received that, the city council will be asked to adopt our section of that document.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, well, if, I see Commissioner Clements, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I promise it's the last one. I was going to ask just one more question, which is if somebody like me was starting to read the plan and looked at the early tables and, you know, we could see what the largest contributors are to greenhouse gas emissions in our community. Is there an analogous table or something in the report that says, you know, the, the best or the biggest bang for the buck or the largest impact that we could make? If you had to name five things to do, or these are the, the top, top strategies, we really should focus on these for the largest impact to drive down. Rather than all 45 or however many there are. Is there anything like that or did we deliberately say we'd like to have all 45 or 47 considered as a package and not highlight any of them individually?
More of the latter. So, so all of the, the quantified greenhouse gas reductions are, we did add those to the, the small font table you referenced before. To, to provide kind of some indication of, of priority setting. We, we didn't want to go so far as to, to distinctly rank them per se, just because conditions change. You know, some, some of these strategies may be more of a priority in one moment versus another. And, and we wanted to try and present the information succinctly on one spot. So the decision makers could look at it and say, hey, these are the ones that, that, that have the biggest bang for the buck. It does require a little bit of scrolling though through, through all the strategies, but we do have them quantified in that table.
Okay.
And just in addition to that, I'd just like to just state that some of the, the items are quite costly. And it'll depend on council's taste for the expensive. And so that's also a factor of why we didn't prioritize, because something that's very expensive might get us very far, but it may not be something that the council feels it can do.
Right. Right. Whereas something that's lower cost, but has a, a good impact also could be a, a good move. So it's, it's, as somebody who wants to help make a difference, it's a little hard to discern easily, like, you know, what could I do or what could we advocate for? Can we really get behind if there are only a few things to really get behind? What would they be? It's a little hard to discern that from this.
And that's a point well taken, but we feel that that's part of our job is to take this document and start working with it and communicating with the community. That here's our plan and let's like to work together and we'll do that with all of our strategies.
Right. Yeah. And that's a good point, Tara. Also, you wouldn't want to get behind some things, but they didn't happen to be the equity focused ones, for instance. And then now we've got a, a challenge, right?
Exactly.
Right. Yeah. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Clements. I, I agree with you actually. Look forward to sort of a cost benefit analysis for this as the, as the plans are built out. If there are no further questions from the commissioners, at this point in time, we could open for comments from the public. And if you would like to make a public comment on the climate mitigation and adaptation plan, agenda item number six B, now is the time to speak. And you can raise your hand on the Zoom on your computer or if you're joining by phone, you can press star nine to, to raise your hand. And Sarah, do we have anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, Chair Roof, we have three people in the waiting room. First up Suzanne Emerson.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Emerson and I've written a letter to each of you. I sent it by email on Saturday. Hope you got that. I'd like to provide four recommendations for making the CMAP more effective. One, track the performance indicators. The appendix includes details of how many electrification upgrades, how many trees to plant, how many EVs in the city fleet, et cetera. But those performance indicators aren't included in the body of the CMAP. And there's no list summarizing the performance indicators that the city staff should be tracking and reporting on annually to show whether the city is on track for strategy implementation. Two, with the planning horizon out to 2050, this CMAP should include planning for how gas lines to residential areas will start being decommissioned. Planning for funding for full electrification of disadvantaged neighborhoods should be prioritized. So those neighborhoods are not adversely affected by the cost of maintaining stranded gas assets. Three, as Commissioner Roof touched upon, add publicly available electric vehicle charging. The CMAP mentions adding charging to a city EV fleet, but there's no discussion of adding publicly available EV charging in city operated parking lots, the downtown area or existing multifamily neighborhoods. And four, decarbonize the city facilities. Making a plan to complete energy efficiency projects for city facilities was a sufficient strategy 12 years ago. But now we need to be making plans for how to transition those facilities off of gas. I'd be happy to talk about with any, any of you individually about these issues if you'd like. Thank you for your efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you. Next caller, please, Sarah.
Kay, go forth.
You can press star six to unmute. Yes, now we can hear you. We have two minutes, two minutes, please.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Goforth. I'm resident of San Carlos. I'd like to thank the city staff and the place works crew for all their work on this plan. I participated in public workshops and I thought they were well done. On the whole, I think this is a good plan. That said, I'd like to see more aggressive goals. As Eli mentioned, I think it was, this plan aims at the state's minimum goals and I think we can do better. I think we have to do better because the state's minimum goals are not likely to get us where we need to be by 2030. Secondly, I'd like to see more frequent than annual progress reporting, especially for the actions that are planned for the immediate, near term and midterm timeframes. I'm not talking about doing a whole full fledged greenhouse gas emissions inventory more frequently, but I think we need to have quarterly or semi annual updates on the things that we're planning to get done within the next two, three years. So, you know, we don't miss opportunities to make mid course corrections. Lastly, I was really pleased to see the commitments to transitioning to electricity as the primary energy source citywide and to pursuing further local amendments and building codes. What I did not see, and forgive me if I missed it, I think Suzanne referenced this as well, was a plan for decommissioning existing gas lines. This is tremendously important for safety reasons and because of the huge climate warming potential of methane and the fact that gas infrastructure is notoriously leaky. And I would just note that Stanford University recently published a study that found that gas line decommissioning in targeted geographic areas, which is a process called branch pruning, could be the most effective and equitable approach to making that transition from gas to electricity. So that folks in the lower income sectors don't get left kind of holding the bag for, for higher gas prices. So I recommend that this be considered as part of this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, Sarah.
Ellen Dooley.
Welcome, Ellen.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you to all the commissioners and thank you to the staff for this very robust plan. I was very impressed with all the detail. And especially for the allocation of, or the assignment of each strategy to, you know, various departments and partner organizations. I thought it was really thorough. I think the only thing that really struck me, and if I didn't see it, it was a long report and I read it a few times, but I didn't see where in the actual action items, there are targeted results to effect. And I, I think it makes it very difficult to see how close, how you're doing when you're tracking with, say, a goal set for greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. Well, how many kilowatt hours of rooftop solar do we need? How many households need to transition out of natural gas into electricity for their furnaces and their hot water heaters? Things like that. How many new households need to transition to PCE? It seems that there is a, it gives a very general direction, but not any real measurable goals. And I would be afraid that at the end of the year, when you add up how much all of that happened, what if it didn't actually result in what we were looking for? So that's what's missing from my perspective unless I missed it. And it also, you know, it keeps us from being able to celebrate the wins, you know, when we get into the reporting. Lastly, I just want to say that I am disappointed as well that we are considering the state's floor as a goal. I just don't see that that inspires anybody. It's, you know, you're going for the floor. I would like to see San Carlos, because I think we are the type of community that would want to go beyond just what the state is requiring minimally. So again, thank you. This is such an involved project, such an important issue. And I appreciate all the time and energy that went into preparing the report and for the commissioners analyzing, assessing and trying to figure this thing out. I really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you. Sarah, are there additional callers?
Yes, we have one more. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Dashal Leeds.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. I'd like to thank the staff consultants who worked on this plan and the community members who voiced their input. We really support Suzanne, Kathy and Ellen's suggestions. They're great. I would like to reinforce all of them, but particularly one of them, which is updating the greenhouse gas reduction targets to be stronger than the state goals. These targets function as a driver of the different policies that you have in here. And the policies are really strong. There are some great actions. Reading these actions, this plan reads like one with a much stronger target. So I think you have the room to have a more aggressive target here. And you would be in line in doing so with Palo Alto, who has an 80% greenhouse gas reduction target by 2030 target. Menlo Park has a zero carbon by 2030 target. That's 90% GHG reduction and 10% carbon removal. And the city of Santa Clara recently just made a motion to add an interim target of 80% reductions by 2035 to their draft climate action plan. Just highlighting some of the language that we think is awesome. I think the whole discussion around buildings in this climate action plan is great. So strategy five. The building section contains some really particularly strong actions. I also really want to commend the city for looking to integrate nature based solutions into its sea level rise mitigation and adaptation strategies. That is really, really important. And I think there's a lot of room to incorporate biodiversity into our adaptation planning. The Sierra Club recently conducted a webinar with leading experts in the field on sea level rise. And we talk a lot about how to incorporate nature based solutions into this. So you can check out our YouTube channel and website to see the recordings of those webinars. So again, thank you so much for this plan and we hope you recommend it as for approval by council. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional callers, Sarah?
No further public comment.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing for this item.
I move we close the public hearing.
I would second that motion.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes.
Okay, well, do we have discussion before we want to vote on whether to adopt the resolution?
I believe I'm ready to vote.
Okay, let's see, now I'm looking, I see Commissioner Garvey, you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Chair Roof. I wanted to make a comment. I, I think it was reasonable and appropriate that we spent a lot of our question and answer time and, and earlier discussion on the big hitting items like transportation and energy. I want to give a shout out to a, a little tiny item that, that, that is also important, and that is the use of gray water to water green spaces. You know, we in San Carlos, we're presented now with a really unique opportunity with a lot of commercial development happening soon on the east side. And I was reading the other day that companies in San Francisco and San Jose have been collecting and treating their rainwater and wastewater and using that non potable water to water the landscaping and the green space on their property. And I thought that with the new development that is proposed for the east side, that this is a, a strategy, even though it's a small one, that we should be mindful of as a city. So, and this is, I can't remember, it's a strategy that's in the plan. I can't remember the number. So I was, it's a little strategy, but it's an important strategy, given where we are as a city with development. And I, you know, years ago, five or 10 years ago, these kinds of treatments were extremely expensive. And they're penciling out better these days. And given that we are having some very large development, I just thought it was something I wanted to put on everybody's radar screen that it could be a possibility for us here in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clements?
Thank you. Two things, I wanted to express support and I'm trying to find the page again. I think there was something about biodegradable utensils and kind of offering support to businesses and small businesses about how to be better environmental stewards with their supplies. I think that was in here. I don't know, Adam or Eli, if you could tell me if I dreamed that or.
No, that's, that's real. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in there. There's a, a support for a county initiative to reduce the distribution of single use plastic items is in the plan. Yes.
Thanks.
We are going to council with, in September on that issue.
Oh, really?
Actually, a week, a week from today, we're going for a, a study session.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, really?
In August.
Yes.
I really wanted to voice support on that and I've been very jealous of, of other jurisdictions. I saw a documentary on San Francisco's, I don't know what they call their office, Office of Environmental Services or something, whatever. They, but they have a business liaison that goes out to businesses and helps them identify products and that are better for the environment and helps them figure out ways to afford them and to order them. And, you know, as I sit at the hair salon and all the foils in my hair get just put right in the garbage. I'm like, oh my goodness, like this is one of the things that would be seemingly not too expensive for the city to do. And, and to promote and to, you know, to help all the businesses to do better. And so I'm really excited to hear that we're pursuing that. So thank you for the information on that. And, and I agree, also, we really do need to focus on water so much. So thank you. Commissioner Garvey for noting the purple pipe initiatives in here. So that is very much something I support. I wanted to ask the question because we had all the public speakers saying that we had strong ideas and. And as to how, what is the feasibility or, or what, is there a path to advocating that the city council support more impressive GHG reduction goals? What would be, what would be involved if that were something that the commission wanted to, to move and to vote for? That would entail redoing the plan.
Yes, it would. We can tell you, I, I can let Lisa answer the question about your process, but I can tell you that the council has been presented the opportunity to think about stronger measures, and they did not direct staff to do that.
Right.
They could change their mind. They could make other changes. You, you guys may be able to add that to your recommendations. However, we would probably have to start at square one with the plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy and Eli.
It seems No, that, I mean, that would require significantly going back and looking over the strategies, identifying opportunities to achieve additional reductions, whatever those may be. So there, there would be quite a bit of work involved in redoing that.
Right. And a time delay?
Yes.
Yeah. And a cost increase.
Can I jump in to clarify that? So the, the plan that's in this document now, if executed, would arrive at the state, the state goal level of, of gas reduction? Is that, is that basically what you're saying?
Yes, we, we have aligned our reduction goals with those from the state and, and many other cities in our county as well.
Yeah.
Right.
I see. So it's not overpowered. I mean, so we're not saying we're going to do more and not, but we have a goal that's below us. It's, it's all calibrated.
And I do want to mention that we're always looking for opportunities to do better. For example, we were on track to do things. However, when PCE became an option for us, we grabbed the opportunity and we ended up exceeding our set goals. So we will always be looking for those opportunities throughout this document. This is just the base. But we want, you know, we just need to have a place to start, and then we can do something better whenever we can. And we'll be looking for those opportunities over the life of this document.
And is there a deadline by which we need to produce this for the state or for the housing elements use?
There, there's not a formal deadline, no.
Okay.
Commissioner Garvey, you have a?
I just, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to build on that comment. I was pleased to hear that we will not only monitor our progress, but that we can and will accelerate when we see an opportunity. That, that also tracks with what I was reading in the plan. For the, for the last plan, I think we had a, a 15% target, and we exceeded it. Coming in, we exceeded it. We did 20%. So we have a good track record, and I'm pleased that as we, we see opportunities to be more aggressive, that we will. Thank you.
Maybe I'll squeeze in a, a question, a technical one, which is, I'm unsure what addendum number one is that's mentioned in the resolution. I didn't see that in the, in the staff report, or did I just miss it?
The addendum is, is the addendum to the general plan's environmental impact report. It should be listed in Exhibit A of the, of the resolution.
I, I still don't quite understand that. So it's, hey.
What page in the online packet? Is it all the way at the end before the public notice?
Yeah, scrolling through the staff.
All the way at the end.
I don't, oh, is that the, you see it?
On the online packet.
That's where I'm looking, on the online packet.
Yeah, I'm seeing, well, the end, packet page 401 is in the middle of it.
Ah, okay, okay.
You can see the attachment label along the, the right side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, looks like it starts on 383.
Okay, thanks. Just want to make sure we're clear on what we're.
Yeah, thank you for that. And then I think the resolution's right before it. Yeah.
Are we getting to the point where we would, we're ready to vote?
Actually, to that point, Chair, if I could ask staff to just explain what the addendum number one does or says. And I understand the purpose of it, or perhaps the consultant, that individual strategies can tear off of this. But just technically, what does it do or say?
Good question, and I might turn this over to either Eli or Tammy to kind of explain how this relates to CEQA.
Thank you.
The, the number one typically refers to the fact that this is the, as we understand it, the first addendum to the existing general plan EIR. So it's purely a, the, the addendum basically finds that all of the environmental impacts, such as they are, that are created by the CMAP, are already assessed and covered by the environmental impact report to the general plan. So the CMAP would not create any new significant or potentially significant impacts that are not already covered by the existing general plan and its environmental impact report.
Got it. So even if the strategies were somewhat different, there are no unmitigated environmental impacts with a negative effect that would be produced by any of the strategies?
That, that's correct. No new significant impacts and no existing impacts that would become significant as a result.
Got it. Thank you. Yep, thanks for the summary.
And just for clarification, we've had a variety of, of suggestions, and I imagine that you're capturing those, and we'll do your best to incorporate that, so we can adopt the resolution to recommend that the city council adopt this plan with the comfort that, that you incorporate to the best possible way, the, the comments that we've had tonight.
Yes, we can, certainly.
With that being said, I will move that the San Carlos City Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending to the City of San Carlos Council, adopt the proposed climate mitigation and adaptation plan, and with addendum number one, do the general plan environmental impact report, and consider suggestions that were made from citizens and commission, planning commission members to increase, as we can see fit, some of the goals to make us more than just the state minimum.
Well, do we, do we have support for the additional language that Commissioner Bradley is suggesting?
Think, point of order, I think we would need a second, and then we could discuss the.
Oh, absolutely. Well.
Can you say the language again, please?
Through the chair of staff, can, oh, sure. Commissioner Bradley, you can do that, but I also taking notes. I'll let you go ahead.
Ending with the EIR, and consider increasing some of the minimum standards that the state has given us, and increase them as, if possible, as suggested by planning commission members and citizens' response. That's a little different, and if I had to say it again, it would still be different. But a, a good wordsmith can get what I mean.
So increasing the target, the target reductions?
I think two or three of, of, of our planning commission actually said that earlier. I didn't, but they did. So I'm accommodating them.
Could I offer a friendly amendment to
Yes.
Have the statement here and have it read, and consider some of the minimum, consider exceeding target reductions to exceed the state minimums, as well as other suggestions offered by commissioners?
That's what I meant. Thank you.
And if, if that's acceptable, I would second that.
Okay.
Your, your amendment to my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, before roll call, Lisa, could you, I'm not sure what I'm voting on. So could you one more time say what it is we're talking about? Thank, thank you. I was just going to ask.
Or a discussion also, just in case anyone wants to.
This is Greg Rubens. I, I'm just to, to help the commission. I think the added language from Commissioner Bradley is not necessarily part of the former recommendation, but is a request for the council to consider those additional men, measures when they review this proposal for our, by the council. So that's kind of the way I'm hearing it, but I, I could be wrong. It may be that he intends to, to make the recommendation different. But using the term to consider these other measures without specifying them in the motion sounds to me like, hey, let's, counsel, we'd like you to look at this. It's kind of what I'm hearing.
That is what I meant. So then should we adopt the motion as written and then bring another motion that would, of our recommendations? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Rubens?
No, I, well, I'm, I'm trying to help the commission clarify with the record that they're trying to set here. So I, I think the adding the, the issue of asking the council to consider is not quite the same as a rec, as adding it to your recommendation. So if your intention is that you would like certain recommendations to be included that were suggested by the public or commissioners, I, I'd like you to, for the record, to specify those. If it's just that you kind of know, and, and we've been through this process before, we, we know that the, the council is going to hear what you heard tonight, and that you would like them to consider those in addition as well, then your recommendation does not necessarily have to include those formally. But, but you've indicated a, a desire that you think the council should consider them. It's not quite there. It's kind of halfway there, is what I think we're, we're talking about.
Greg, I think the amended motion, however, and maybe Lisa can read back what she wrote down, with the friendly amendment, said, adopt a resolution recommended with this language, and consider exceeding the minimum state targets. And, and so the consider became a verb. It wasn't like with considerations of things that other people mentioned. So that's, so perhaps, and so, and if it was how you heard it, then I misunderstood.
So I, I think, I think I'm, yes, it's maybe one of those things where it's just, we want to be precise in our language. So if, if it's to consider these additional measures to exceed the state standards, I mean, that's a message you can send to the council that you want them to consider that and staff, because staff needs to be able to present that to the council. That may, that's probably sufficient for your purposes. But I, but I don't, you know, if, if you formally add those things, I think I heard from our consultants that they haven't analyzed that in the, necessarily in the addendum to the general plan environmental impact report. And, and there may be some, because they're tearing off the original one and saying there's no additional impacts, but some of those items that were mentioned by the public might have environmental impacts that we need to look at and have the council consider. Like, for example, and this is just off the top of my head here, is the, the idea to, to decommission the gas pipelines? Well, that sounds a lot more like a project to me that might require some environmental review if we're going to put that in here. It may not be, but I, I just want this, I want our, our record to be clear and, and us to be able to analyze that, if, if that's something that the council's going to consider.
What I was trying, what I was trying to do was just ask them to look at that. They can certainly ignore it or turn it down, or go along with it, or increase it, whatever they come up with. Because what the planning commission does, as you know, is make recommendations and endorse things for the city council. But they are the final vote and the, the decision maker in all cases. I understand that.
Through the chair and the city attorney, I did take notes when Vice Chair Clemens was requesting Commissioner Bradley for a friendly amendment. And based upon what I'm hearing, I don't know if this will help, but maybe it could. So if the motion is that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the council adopt the CMAP and addendum number one to the general plan EIR, and further, that the council consider exceeding minimum state targets, as well as other suggestions offered by the community, I'm wondering if the, and further, that the council consider, it sort of could embody the commission sentiment, that the council could consider some of the statements that were reflected at this meeting, but not necessarily that it, I don't know if that helps, but I was.
It's not binding, no.
But it sounds to me like this friendly amendment is asking the council, sitter, exceeding the minimum state targets. Is that the direction of, is that what the amendment on the floor is trying to do?
Now, I hear two parts to it. There's the, the consider a, the, that the targets levels be more aggressive, and then also to consider everything else that was raised as ideas. And to me, the second one is, is not very specific. I would be pretty happy just kind of leaving it at, at the first portion of the, of the additional language where we ask them to consider having more aggressive reduction targets than the state minimum. Because the, the additional language is good, but there, a lot of comments were made, and it's a bit much to expect that they, that the staff prepare, that the staff prepare.
Chair, just to clear.
Okay.
Chair, if I could just clarify my friendly amendment, it was not meant to, and so actually the maker of the motion could just reject my friendly amendment because maybe it wasn't in keeping. And we, he could say what he meant, or go with what Lisa said. But I, I did not mean to scoop and, and take in new strategies and gas line decommissioning and some other stuff that we had not analyzed and might cause a change in the EIR, that I thought it was, my statement was limited to the, like, formatting changes that the commissioners had. So I said, and commissioners suggested changes, you know, kind of minor readability kinds of edits
Yeah.
that we had suggested. I.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Just to clarify what I intended by the friendly amendment. So, yeah, Commissioner Bradley might reject that.
Yeah, Commissioner Bradley, maybe to simplify things, you could. Yeah, Commissioner Bradley, maybe to simplify things, you could, um, reject that, um, that, uh, second, the, from Commissioner Clements and rephrase and restate what you, the shorter version that you seem to have come around to.
Could I, um, because all kinds of things are coming into my mind now that, Mr. Rubens has set off, uh, thankfully. So could I make the motion as, as, uh, proposed in the document? With the language that, um, Ms. Porras has, has read to us. I think it's better stated than I made. And, um, Commissioner Clements has agreed that, uh, she would withdraw her.
I, I've withdrawn my second. Right. So we need a new second.
So I make the motion and, and using the language that Ms. Porras provided us.
And Ms. Porras, can you please restate that language?
Sure. Um, this is what I have. So you can correct it if it's not, not the intention is. So obviously, um, the first part of the motion reads as what's on the screen. Correct. Adopt a resolution recommending the council adopt the climate mitigation and adaptation plan. And addendum, addendum number one to the general plan environmental impact report. And further that the council consider exceeding the state targets as well as other friendly suggestions offered by the commission. And I'm wondering if friendly suggestions needs to refer to some of the, um, document formatting. Maybe that might help clarify things in terms of what those friendly suggestions are. That I think that would help make the motion, you know, very clear in terms of what this commission is asking the council to do. So that could read, um, and further that the council consider exceeding minimum state targets as other, um, friendly suggestions to document formatting as offered by the commission.
Okay, so that, that clarifies the motion that Commissioner Bradley put forward. Do we have a second?
I have a question. So if we go with that, how much additional analysis and work needs to be done on what these exceeding the minimum state targets involves before it's presented to the city council? We didn't do a lot of work this evening in exploring what would happen if we went to forty-five percent versus fifty-two percent. And I'm, I'm not clear how much additional work needs to happen if we adopt the motion in the way it's currently phrased before it goes to the council.
Well, I can answer that. We would have to work with placeworks to get an addendum to our contract with them because we're already to the maximum of the money that we had in the contract. So we need to do an addendum with them based upon whatever they, they think, um, it will take. I would think we would go to council first to see if they want to go with these changes, because if they do, then we're talking about a longer process. We would have to go out to the community again, um, to get more in, input on additional strategies. And it'll just look quite a bit different. Um, is there anything Tammy or Eli you want to add to that?
Uh, I, I do not have anything to add. It would, it would be a reasonably significant amount of work to, to re-explore additional targets.
Yeah, it's already been a two-year process and what would we be looking at? Maybe another six months, year?
Could easily be within that timeframe.
Okay.
And then just as a follow-up, if I could, uh, through the chair, what consequences are there, if any, to missing the opportunity to get this plan into the general plan housing update? And would that happen or would it still be able to be included?
Uh, Commissioner Garvey, I think that's a question for me. The, um, the focused general plan update, which is including the housing and the safety elements. And of course, a portion of the housing element does need to address, um, energy conservation. And there's specific instructions for how that's done for state law within the housing element law itself. And we are on a target to start to draft those, the draft elements of the general plan, uh, next year. So what we'd like to do is go to planning commission and city council by the end of this year and talk about how we're going to meet our arena and get buy-in and approval for the solution that we're going to take and then go write the plans, uh, because it's a lot of work. So it's kind of a checking point. So our plan is to start drafting these and have them drafted at the early part of next year, say in the first quarter. And then we need to start the environmental review process. And then these documents come forward, um, by the end of the year for adoption. So if the, if this, what I hear from this team would take six months to a year, um, I don't necessarily think that there is a missed opportunity, but maybe perhaps, um, you know, what the, what the housing element might include, may not capture, you know, kind of the overall strategy that would have been outlined or laid out in a climate mitigation and adaptation plan. Where those, where the housing element and the CMAP could be really, um, um, consistent and in line with one another. I think that a six month to a year process to get to that point, to that new point would then allow the housing element, um, to advance prior to. And not necessarily that that couldn't be workable, but that would be the end result. If I'm hearing six months to a year, because we have to get the housing element drafted out for environmental review and adopted, um, by the end of 2022.
It just, this is the city attorney again. I, I think that the motion and the second that's on the floor right now, um, I mean, is the action that was, is before you tonight? And what, what the recommendation you want to make to the council? So if it's a recommendation, the council could go, could go in a different direction and consider the additional uh, measures or, 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 um, you know, and the other issues. And, and so I, I don't think you need to go beyond that tonight, really. Uh, I think it's, if you feel like you, you're comfortable with the, asking the council can, to consider exceeding the state standards and, and making the typographic or, or other, you know, clarifying changes, that's fine. Um, I don't think any further analysis other than what the, uh, you know, if the council wants to go in that direction is, would be required, but they don't want to go any further than, than the plan a, as recommended, but then they don't need to. So I think you've covered the issue, um, in my opinion.
So just to clarify the motion before us, would it be other friendly suggestions for document formatting? Is that what you intend, Commissioner Bradley?
Well, I didn't want to leave it wide open because we'd have probably dozens of people at the city council next week. Asking for a, a lot of things that weren't even appropriate. For this, um, climate plan. Um, and I can see that by opening up and asking them to consider increasing it, one is going to slow down the process and two, make it more expensive. And I don't think the ca, the council is very interested in doing either of those. They could still do it on their own. They, you know, we're just recommending here that that what we have, we're approving of the document that we, that we've seen this week. And asking the city council to, to approve it and get it moving with the state. I, that's.
Yeah.
Those were my intentions.
Yeah, I would.
I don't think there's support for very much beyond that. So I'll make the motion as it's printed. And drop the amendment, which was, was, uh, the amender asked that we do that anyway.
Okay, so we have a, we have a revised motion, which is the one that's showing on the screen now.
Yeah. So it's a substitute motion that needs to receive its own second. And then you can vote on that. And if it fails, we go back to the prior motion.
Thank you, Greg.
And the substitute, and the substitute motion is that you're looking for a second on is the one that's on our screen and that's it.
Correct.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second? And, and the motion is as what's shown on the screen here? Am I correct?
Correct.
Can we have a roll call?
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Any additional discussion on this?
Yes, uh, Chair, thank you very much. I just had one, one item I want, that we didn't acknowledge or talk about this evening. And I wanted to make sure it was on the record. I wanted to, um, acknowledge all of the partners that the city had in developing this action plan. There's many regional agencies, um, the business community, a lot of community organizations. And their work and our partnership with them doesn't end now that we have a plan. Uh, uh, my expectation is that going forward, that we as a city will continue to partner with all of these organizations, business communities and regional agencies, because we as a city can't meet these goals alone. So I appreciate that the partnerships have been formed. And my expectation is going into the future is that the partnerships will continue.
Thank you, Commissioner Garvey. Are there other thoughts, um, from commissioners before we take a, a roll call?
I want to agree with the former Chair Garvey that this is just the end of the beginning. We're starting to implement this plan as we go forward. Thank you.
At least it's not the beginning of the end. Good. It's the end of the beginning. Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Bradley.
Be interpreted from this.
Any other comments? Yes?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Any other comments before we move to a roll call? On the motion we have before us? Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Well, thank you.
Take a moment to thank you all and to reassure, um, Commissioner Clements that we will take a look at everything you've said and make sure that we incorporate your comments, um, as appropriate. As well as, uh, Commissioner Bradley's with the coloring. We will definitely look at those things.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. It's like, thank the other commissioners for, we kind of worked through a, uh, we did some problem solving and working through a difficult issue there together. That was good. I think we can, um, uh, move on. Um, and the next part of our meeting is, um, oh, is the, um, I reports correspondence and general information. Lisa, do you have, um, a report for, on recent city council actions?
No, I do not, uh, Chair Ruth and Commissioners. Um, the council has been on a summer recess. There isn't anything, um, in terms of recent actions to report on.
And are there planning commission reports or comments?
I have, I have one.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, on August, oh, I forget the date. I think it was August, one day last week, maybe the 10th or the 11th. I attended the city workshop on the housing element. It was well attended. It was a robust discussion. And I appreciated the options that were put forth with everybody on, on the Zoom workshop on how might we go about meeting these large, this large Rena number that is coming our way? And I came away with really a, a good feeling that many people in our community realize just what a big job it's going to be for us to meet those numbers and to, um, zone in, in a way that will allow us to, uh, build that much housing. I'm glad I attended.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Garvey. And Commissioner Bradley, did you have a comment or report?
Um, I did, but it slips my mind now. Oh, yes. I thought, uh, uh, this is to Lisa Porras. I thought August 16th was our summer vacation.
You are correct, uh, Commissioner Bradley. Tonight would have been, except we had an issue with the noticing for the CMAP on August the 2nd. So I had pulled the commission. And I think hopefully you got that phone call as well, um, to see if we can make tonight work. Um, that way we wouldn't be so pinched in time to get this on September 7th and have the climate mitigation and adaptation plan. I don't know if we'd be able to be turned around so quickly to council. So I would like, on that note, I would like to thank the commission for being really flexible and switching, um, the dates. So you had August 2nd off and are back now tonight. So thank you.
That's what we're here for. Lisa, thank you.
Any other commission reports or comments? Okay, Lisa, correspondence?
Yes, Chair Ruth. And, um, I wanted to point out, um, to the commission, as most of you know, um, and to the public or anyone who's listening, that, um, one of the items that the commission had requested that staff bring back was some information about the numerous housing bills that were introduced this year and that are making their way, um, through the legislature. And so those have been summarized and, um, transmitted as correspondence to the commission in your pocket this evening. Um, so I just wanted to draw your attention on that. Um, since they're not on the agenda, we won't discuss them. But we will have a place and time to answer any questions and have a dialogue and kind of go into an informal Q and A on those, um, at your next meeting on September the 7th. So we felt it'd be helpful to get that out in advance. So, uh, you have it, um, in your pocket tonight. And that's all the correspondence for, for this evening.
Yeah, just a question about that, not to discuss it, but just, um, factual. Does this list include those items that have become two-year bills?
Um, I have to check with, um, my colleague on that who put that together. So I, I don't know. But maybe that's something that we can, uh, clarify and send out as information to the commission.
Okay.
So you could, if, if which ones are two years?
If some are delayed till next year, I saw that on the, on the report. I mean, I think some are coming up next in 22. But I think you're right. They could be, some of it could be two-year bills. What activity?
Right, but not all of the two-year bills are on here, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Are there planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects?
Uh, yes, I would like to, um, let the public know and the commission know that we have a, well, you know, because it's next week, the commission notes, that we have, um, on the agenda, a special meeting with the planning commission for next Wednesday. That would be August 25th. And this is to have a study session on the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. So we're going to be continuing our discussion from the planning commission study session that we had on July, uh, 14th. And we're going to dive into those 10 big moves a little bit more deep, deeply and provide some more, um, information and details on those strategies as well as, you know, how we envision the plan to be implemented and also be touching on community benefits. So, um, we're going to have the packet out to you. Our target is Thursday this week. So you'll have some more information to look at while in advance of next Wednesday's study session. So I just wanted to remind the commission that you're all here, that study session does start at 6:00 PM on Wednesday and it's a special meeting again. And so, you know, for anyone in the public that's listening, we hope you join us. And then following that, the commission will return to its regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, September the 7th. Just a reminder, that'll be on Tuesday, September 7th due to the holidays. So we'll have on the agenda an opportunity to discuss the correspondence that was given to the commission in tonight's packet. We also have on the agenda a study session for the Protected Tree Ordinance that you might have heard about. We have an item coming forward with a request for a Mills Act at 447 Hillcrest. And the Mills Act is a historic preservation measure that could allow a reduction in property taxes in exchange for the preservation and upkeep of a historic resource. So this is something that would need a recommendation by the planning commission and is ultimately decided on by the city council. We have also, so this is going to be a pretty heavy agenda and our goal is going to be that we get the packet out to you, we can advance, because when we have more items, we want to give you more time to review the material. So, but the other item that is minor, but it still requires to come to the planning commission is a use permit modification for recology at 275 Shoreway. They are looking to modify their hours. So that would be something the commission would need to review and consider and act on. And then lastly, we do have an item that was appealed based on the RDRC's decision to deny a single-family home at 2125 Carmelita. And so that will be going forward to the planning commission for your review based on the applicant's appeal of the RDRC's decision. And then a couple more items and I'll again follow up in an email. So you don't have to write all this down, but just so that you can track the progress of some pretty high, high-profile projects. On September 8th, we do have a special meeting study session with the city council on the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. So following the planning commission's review of that, of those items on the 25th, we will be advancing to the city council on 8th. And then coming forward, we're still targeting a formal hearing on the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan itself on September the 20th. And then it would go to council after that. So that's just kind of like, kind of a detailed overview of the remainder of this month and then going forward into the month of September. And I'll save the rest for later, but you heard me earlier this evening when I mentioned that we do want to schedule study sessions with the planning commission and city council on the housing element update. So that's something that'll come a little bit later, but I don't have exact dates for that. But given that we're full until September, you can, it will be before you sometime October, November. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right. Can I ask a clarifying question? Lisa, next Wednesday, the 25th, what time does that begin?
The study session with the planning commission begins at 6:00 PM August 25th, which is a Wednesday.
And are the slides available from the last East Side Innovation session and/or will we be able to see the slides from this study session in advance?
I can definitely give you the slides from July 14th. A lot of the information that will be on the slides will be in your packet. But probably I don't, usually we, you know, we like to be nimble. So I don't know if I can give the slides in advance. The, the, the focus of the conversation, that material will be in your pocket. But what I'll do is I will give the planning commission, I'll send out, send out the slides from July 14th. And then around this week, you'll get, you know, updated and more, you know, updated information included within your pocket.
Thank you. Great. Even, if I could make a comment, even if there were a way to post the slides as the meeting starts so that the public has access at the same time, you know, that we have it at the same time that the public has it, I found last time it was challenging to take notes as much as I needed to because there was so much information on those slides that I hadn't seen in slide format, which I thought was very helpful.
Actually, that's something that we can definitely do. And what, where we can put those slides is we can upload those on the project website. So that would be San Carlos Innovation.org.
Okay.
We could, that would be actually the perfect place to put them, because putting it in the packet, excuse me, formal, you know, planning commission packet, it goes down, it's a little bit difficult to do, but we have a project website. So that's where we can put those. So great, great suggestion.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, planning commission. I think we can adjourn now.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good job, David.
Thanks.
Nicely done.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Dan.